Yes. So I'm going to call to order Board of Education, study session February 13th, 2020, 6 o'clock. Secretary, take attendance.
All Board members are present except for Jackie.
Okay, I'm going to make, I want to make, can I have an amendment to the agenda so we can vote on, since Jackie's not here, to Zoom into the meeting?
I move that we permit Jackie to participate via Zoom.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Jackie can be here live via Zoom.
All right, so then I have to amend all Board members are present.
She's, she's, yeah.
And one virtual.
She's here.
She's there, I can see.
Do we have public comment?
We do.
Hi.
Hello.
How you doing?
Thank you.
I'm a little nervous. Hi, my name is Angel Lau and I live at 255 Bay Lane in Bloomfield Hills. I am an IA mom and I'm a proud member of the task force. I'm here today to report that I am going to be one of your best little soldiers to pass the bond and rally the troops to do so, and I'm really looking forward to it passing. With that, I just wanted to kind of ask for your support and your thoughts moving forward. Our kids are really awesome, just like the kids at, the 600 or 700 kids at East Hills are awesome. My son just visited there and had a great experience and we're really looking forward to that transfer. I think that those kids at East Hill are just as fantastic as our kids at the IA. And I hope that moving forward, we look at that, that all kids are worthy of good learning I think we've been really, really proactive at the IA. To be kind of silly, we ain't too proud to beg. We have, we've asked the Birmingham Foundation for support for our teachers, maybe some minor things that we need, and we don't, we're not eligible, we don't qualify. We've asked Birmingham Bloomfield Foundation, we kind of lucked out on that. We've gotten some pretty awesome donations, which we're really proud. We're trying to solve our own problems and we have really awesome parents that have written a lot of checks. So, we're trying. With that said, you know, I had a dad that had MS and was in a wheelchair and when I look around, you can't help but to not put that lens on and see the struggles that people would have. Our building needs some attention and I'm sure you're aware of that. And I just want you to know that I think our kids are great, our kids are worthy, just as all the other kids in all the other buildings are too. So, I appreciate this time and I appreciate your service, your support and your consideration and I wish you the best of luck. We'll be rallying behind you.
Thank you. That study session, first thing on the agenda, Michigan Campaign Finance Act overview. Okay. Jim Crowley from Miller Canfield.
Yes, Jim Crowley, Miller Canfield. I work in our finance group, working on the bond issue for the school district. I was asked to come today to present to the Board and just a quick overview of the Campaign Finance Act rules that the school district's going to be, must comply with. Let me pull up my PowerPoint real quick here. One second, if I can do this. I did it. So I have a PowerPoint, also handed out a little brochure that we've put together, you may have seen it, that has some dos and don'ts that some of the questions we often run into in this area. So, Michigan Campaign Finance Act applies to all election campaign activity in Michigan, so it covers both candidates and ballot proposals. And the key, and it talks about financing campaigns, you're all probably familiar with it obviously because you're elected officials. We are dealt with the financing of election campaigns and the financing of ballot proposal campaigns. The big thing that we're going to talk about tonight is the fact that the Campaign Finance Act prohibits public resources being used to advocate, either for a campaign, for an election of an individual, or a ballot proposal. So, in the school district setting, obviously, we're in the, coming up to a bond election. For schools, we have operating millages and bond elections and building and site sinking funds and once in a while, we have enhancement millage like Macomb has on the ballot on March 10th as well. So, but today, we're going to talk about the, focused on the bond part of this. When I give this talk, I like to give an example. It's interesting how innocently these violations come up. And so this has become a good one that I've used, you know, over the last handful of years. And this comes out of West Bloomfield School District and it was back many years, I don't know how many, about five or six years where they're renewing their operating millage. In the 4th grade, teachers got together and a civics lesson said, "Let's have our kids write letters to the neighbors." Scotch Elementary was having its 25th anniversary and they also had an upcoming operating millage. So Sidney, so each kid wrote one letter and sent it out to one neighbor. So Sidney wrote this, so she, and the teacher didn't tell the kids what, just generally, what, you know, the two things you want to hit in the letter. So this is the letter that got sent out, Sidney sent it to one person, the person happened to be a lawyer, but, and the lawyer looked at it and said, "This is a Campaign Finance violation." And it is, and we'll talk about why that is, but the thing I tell people is this, I mean, nobody knew, nobody intended to break the law, very innocent. This was very, the only good news about this is the violation was filed with the Secretary of State after the election. What usually happens is these show up in the paper beforehand, become this distraction, it's in the newspaper, you're cheating on your election. Your opponents are well aware of these rules and they look for this stuff and once they see it, they, they jump at it. So, so I just included, Section 57 of the Campaign Finance Act is what's applicable to our bond election and basically says you can't make a contribution or expenditure, which are defined, contribution is basically cash, or cash in kind, and expenditure is materials, goods, services. And you can't either contribute money or provide goods or services to aid in the passage or defeat of a ballot proposal. So when we talk about school districts, we talk about their resources and their expenditures, we have the normal papers, pencils, your computers, all your supplies, which is pretty simple. Really, the big area we see potential violations is when we get into the emails, the phones, the social media accounts, your website, you know, a simple thing as having a link to the yes committee on your website, total no-no. So, a lot of the violations we see are in that social media, you know, internet universe. Employees' time is also a big area. I met last week with two groups of your administrators and we spent a lot of time talking about what they can and can't do. You know, they are free and we'll talk a little bit more about to advocate when they're off the clock. And sometimes that's a question for administrators when, you know, superintendent's always on the clock, right? So it's, you know, sometimes that gets into a gray area. And use of school facilities, we'll talk about. So under Section 57, I, these are, I'm going to go over four important exceptions that we have to the Campaign Finance Act. Number one, would be applicable to the Board. Public officials are free to advocate, that's your job. Number two is another big one, is we're free, the district is free to use its resources to advocate, provide, I'm sorry, is free to disseminate factual information, not advocate to that. We have some, an exception for the use of our facilities and then officials, the employees, when they're off the clock are the four exceptions. And I'll just go through these. So Board members, you all are public officials, that's your job to advocate, but you cannot use resources, school resources to do that. You are allowed to use incidental or occasional use of resources. So example, it'd be Superintendent Watson wants to write a letter of advocacy to the local paper, you could use your lighter head and send it off. If you have to use your phone to talk to somebody in the media, that's fine. If you get into the realm of mass mailings and things of that nature, that's, that's probably crossing the line. So more of a one-on-one communication on that. An example is Governor Snyder in the State of the Union back when we had the road funding ballot proposal, that year in the State of Union, he spent about 10 seconds advocating for a yes vote on that ill-fated ballot proposal. Someone immediately filed a claim or complaint with the Secretary of State. Secretary of State said that was incidental compared to the whole resources that were used to broadcast that, his speech, the State of the Union speech. So, also Board members are free, your Board members, to advocate, pass a resolution, you can discuss it at Board meetings, so that's all good. The, the second exception we talked about was you're free to inform, but not advocate. And then when, and when you inform, you don't have to tell both sides of the story, you could just tell them the good information, you know, as long as it's factual information, you're free to do this. This came up in Birmingham, just in the last election cycle with the garage, the infamous garage vote. The city put out some responses to some anti-groups material and they, obviously, it was all factual, but they didn't, the opponents claimed that they didn't put all the facts in. And the Secretary of State said, "Well, no, they weren't advocating," you know, "they were factual, so they don't have to put all the facts in there." So you can tell your story informationally. And we talked to school districts and, you know, an informational campaign will sell itself without having to do any advocacy. An advocacy that's prohibited under law is direct advocacy. So you actually have to say, "Vote for" or "Support," it has to be very direct in what you do. Having said that, we advise people to stay away from words that might kind of get you close to a direct advocacy on that. So we just, some examples in this slide that kind of what, what not to use as far as language. And again, I don't think you really need to do it, I think the, when schools do the informational campaigns, they, it pretty much sells itself. The third is the use of facilities. Advocacy can take place at facilities, as long as the groups, there's equal access for all groups that want to come in, obviously subject to the Board policy. So the yes, the yes committee could come, as long as the no, no committee was also allowed to use facilities. As far as campaign advocacy within the building, none of that can happen in the building, you know, oftentimes we'll see the factory off at lounges being used with stuff up in the billboard, none of that can happen. Any advocacy cannot be placed anywhere in the school building. We can do informational material within the school district, that is fine, except for if this is a polling site, that can't be anywhere in the building on the polling day, the election day. The final is the personal time. Employees are free outside of working hours to advocate, as long as they're not using any resources, if phone, computer, internet, email, if that's all their own personal stuff. One thing we always have trouble with is somebody that's off the clock technically, but is on school facilities and it becomes a gray area of, say, somebody's attending a basketball game and employee attends a basketball game to watch their child, I think that's, they're fine, I think they're off the clock, but if they're, they are for any kind of a school-related reason, there may be an argument that they are on the clock and that may be a problem. So I always warn people to be careful when you're on school property on that. So we just talk about when in doubt, you know, have the yes committee do it, award, you know, get, stay away from words that may get you close to being, deemed to be direct Oftentimes, and we've been fine with the, schools have put out, you know, "Remember to Vote" bylines. We had two districts recently, we got contacted by Secretary of State, the Secretary of State thinks that this is a violation, we disagree. So somebody, I forget what district it was, but had on their email byline said, "Remember to Vote" on the date, and the Secretary of State, obviously someone called them and they called the school and said that they thought that was a problem. We disagree with that, I don't think that's advocacy, but we just tell people that that might be an issue on that. So there are some penalties to this, the, you know, it could be a misdemeanor and fines, but usually we've done a, not a huge amount of these, which is good, but typically what happens is they investigate and if they find a violation, they will just ask you to take steps to not have it happen in the, in the future. So in this case in West Bloomfield, obviously Sidney used the word "for" there. We made a pretty good argument that I didn't think her intent was to have them vote yes, but, so they, they got a letter that's, and this went on for back and forth, probably three or four exchanges. They wanted to know, they want, tried to get their hands on other letters that other kids wrote to see, they were thinking that the teacher kind of directed them to write it this way, but they couldn't get any other letters and then they wanted to know, you know, what other resources were used. So for this violation, basically what the, the school resources was one piece of paper and one stamp and they couldn't prove that the teacher actually was involved in, in having her write that. So, after three or four letters, they got a letter saying, you know, "You violated the Campaign Finance Act, but, you know, just don't do it again," kind of a thing, so. Poor Sidney. So, that's it. I mean, I always say that there's, you know, from an informational standpoint, there's so much leeway there that really, like I said, that the information sells, makes, makes your case on that.
Do you have a couple of questions? Are you done?
Yes.
So, a couple of questions. So if Sidney's letter had just said, "Please remember to vote on February 25th," would that be okay?
Yes.
If Sidney's mom sent Sidney to school with a "Vote Yes" button, can he wear that during the school day at school?
So this gets into where the Board has a policy about that, about wearing, you know, that type of stuff. So really, it's not a campaign violation.
It's not a campaign violation.
No. I mean, it's like if a student came in with a "Vote Yes" shirt on, I mean...
Which they can do.
Yeah. Well, some, some districts would have policies about certain dress, but, you know...
And school board members are...
So just, I don't think they care about, because it's, it depends what grade kids you're talking about. So, say elementary kids, you know, there's no voters there, maybe the teachers, but, so, I don't know if anybody cares about that, so.
Go ahead.
What if a couple hundred high school students start wearing "Vote Yes" buttons? Is that a problem?
No.
Okay.
But if, it might run into Supreme Court cases with Tinker, if you buy, if you say you can't wear it.
Correct. Yeah, there's a free speech argument there, absolutely, so.
I have a question. What happens if this scenario, there's a PTO meeting, there is not a defined no group, but they, there is a yes group, they invite them to speak and maybe they have literature to pass out, can they, can the yes group speak?
Yes.
Can the PTO president, as a parent, say, "Yes, I'm going to vote for this as well?"
Yes.
Even if it's on school grounds during school day, at a school sanctioned meeting?
Yeah. So it's a, it's a school facility use and as long as the facilities of the no group came along and said, "We want to use your facility," we have to allow them to use it. So, as long as you have equal use. So PTO is not, I mean, there's no employees, it's facilities.
No, but they're using the school facilities.
Correct.
So that's not a problem as long as if there was a no group, the invitation is also extended to them.
Yes.
Okay. And in their capacity as, because they're not employees, they're volunteers, so they can say at any time during the day, even on, on school grounds, that they're voting for a bond?
Yes.
Okay. Can they use their email channels to spread the word to vote yes?
As long as it's not a school email.
Well, what if they got their email, you know, they used school directory but re-typed it and saved it under their own lists?
That's fine.
They can't...
As long as it's not a school-sponsored or established email network.
Okay. They can use it, but they have to retype it and make their own group emails?
Yeah. The directory information, yes.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
Can you go back to Slide 9? It went so fast, there was something there, I was wondering about it. Can you go over that again?
So, this is the Board member and the superintendent's a public official, by the way, he's appointed by the Board, so under Michigan law, it's the Board members and the superintendent are public officials and you're free to advocate, that's your job, as elected officials. But you still can't use other than incidental resources to do the advocacy. So incidental is a letter, a phone call, things that are incidental in nature to do this advocacy. And then as far as the Board, your Board, obviously you're free to, you know, speak freely at your Board meetings and advocate, the Board could pass a resolution supporting the ballot proposal as well.
And we don't have to be subtle, we can use essential, critical, if we want to.
Yeah, no, you're, you're free.
We can say "vote."
That's your job.
Okay.
So, one more question. If, if someone happens to bring advocacy literature inside the school, a parent, let's say, not knowing that they weren't supposed to, and they disseminate it, what, I mean, that's technically not okay, even if it's a parent that does it?
So, you know, the example we get is someone comes to the basketball game, starts handing out literature. It's kind of a gray, I mean, you're not, they're using, they're there, you know, for a basketball game and they're free to, you know, wear a "Vote Sure" or hand out literature. I'm not sure that what the district can do in that regard, as long as you, you're not supporting it or any connection to it. I don't know that what you can do with it.
But just as simple as, as long as that venue, no one stops someone who is a no to give out literature, then that's fine.
Correct.
So that's the rule.
Yep.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That was really helpful.
Next, Pat's going to give us a bond 2020 update. Sher is going to give us a bond 2020 update.
Hi. So on the heels of that, we'll talk about what we're doing from an informational standpoint. Okay. Okay. So I have just one slide here for you that I'll walk you through. We have been very busy putting out information to the community, but also preparing information for the community that has not gone out yet. So there are things that have, have already hit the streets, but there's lots more to come. So in January, which January was very short because the Board action was like the last day or second to last day of January, but in January, we sent a press release, we sent a letter to families and the community, and we began our draft of the FAQ. The FAQ is a very important part of the website, of literature that will come out, that verbiage gets used over and over. So fortunately, Jim was able to proof it very quickly, we really appreciate that quick turnaround. There's a lot of information happening very quickly, so it's important that legal looks it over before it hits any families. First week, oh, yes.
Sorry, second question. The letter, that was the, an email last, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, so that would have just gone to our families, not to the greater community?
It went to all available email addresses. So if you've signed up to receive email from us, you received that from us. So staff, families, any available email address received that letter.
Okay.
The first week of February, our social media messages began, those are not going to come very rapidly at this point, but those will speed up over time. Our FAQ was draft, the draft was completed and it began its review phases. And the review phases for a lot of our communication, we review them internally, so Cabinet takes a look at it, folks who have been intimately involved with the planning of this through scope and design, our Speakers Bureau is taking a look at all of this, then it's going to legal, then often it's coming back to us because maybe there's something that we need to fix or correct. And then if, if there is something we need to correct and we make any further changes, it goes back to legal and then it can go out. So the FAQ was drafted, it began its review phases, the website went up, our campaign dos and don'ts was presented by legal, that was to all of our building principals. We have a district administrators team meeting coming up and Jim will be present at that as well to review with all of our district administrators. The dos and don'ts was also posted on the website to make sure all staff were aware and that was highly visible. Information meeting dates, we started to plan those, we wanted to be sure that we could announce all of those at the same time so that no community felt left out. We didn't want to announce a whole bunch on one side of the district and have folks, you know, think that we maybe forgot them on another side, so we waited until we had a really good slate to announce those. The following week, we establish a process for updating the website and again, that's pretty much what I just described for all communication to follow. So it's receiving internal review, it's receiving legal review, it's receiving a second internal review, potentially another legal review, and then out it goes. And hopefully that happens quickly.
Sher, for the website, for people that don't have access to our homepage, that what is the, is, is there a place, is there an address that we can announce now that they can go to?
Oh, absolutely. It's remained the same from the old website, so we just moved the URL forward and it's bloomfield.org/bond. So that remains the same. So, yes.
Sher, on the informational meetings, I looked through as of yesterday, I didn't print it out today, but are we planning on going to any of the, like the senior center or the township hall or the homeowners association groups, because it looks like all of the meetings are set up in our buildings?
Yep. Yep. The first ones that we were able to establish are in our facilities because that's most within our control. So now we're working with the township, we are working with the senior center, we've been communicating with them, they've been really wonderful. They have their slate of events, so we have to now work into their schedule. The other thing is, I expressed to them that we'd like to bring students to perform with us as we did last time. So, I don't know if you recall, 2012 was a while ago, but in 2012, we brought student performers and that was a really nice touch. For some of our residents who don't often get to see our students perform, it's a, it's a nice event and it becomes more than just information about the bond, it's a nice relationship builder as well. So, we're looking to do that. So we're coordinating all of those right now, HOAs are starting to reach out to us, there's a form on the website that they can fill out to request a meeting and we're pulling in all those requests and then we're starting to see what dates and times we have available. Pat did designate a Speakers Bureau so that if he's not able to personally attend a meeting, that there's someone who is knowledgeable, who can give the full presentation and answer all questions on his behalf.
Have we received any requests for presentations?
One, so far.
Okay.
Yep. So we're asking all community members to please put those through the website, that's the best way for us to triage support because those come to us immediately and then we can start looking at calendars and start booking things. But good question, yes, we will be out in the community quite a bit. And on that note, we'd like to thank our community partners for inviting us in for that, so we know they're busy.
Possibly even talking to the Birmingham Bloomfield Chamber of Commerce.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. The clergy, all of those groups. So, the information meeting presentation draft was completed during that week and again, started to go through the review phases, the lobby easels were drafted, those are not quite hitting review phases, but almost, we're almost there on those. So what's next? This is a very short list of what's next, it kind of encompasses many, many things, there's a lot of minutia in these big bullet points. So information meetings will occur and more will be added to the list, like what you mentioned, Howard. We're going to do Facebook Live chats, Facebook Live wasn't a thing in 2012, so we're very excited to try this out. Hopefully the community will bear with us as we... Hopefully, the community will bear with us as we launch our first set of these. We're going to do Twitter chats as well, if you don't, if you aren't familiar with Twitter chats, typically you pick a hashtag, and then people can join you and follow along via that hashtag. They can also go back through, so if they're not able to join you live, they can go later through Twitter, see all of the dialogue that happens. So it's really a Q and A, back and forth on Twitter. We'll have a variety of printed materials that will hit homes. This is a really important one for us, we want to make sure that people receive things in their mailboxes. There are a lot of people who do not go to our website as a course of their day. There are a lot of people who do not receive our emails, as you pointed to. So it's important that they receive information in their mailboxes, and they will receive a significant amount from us. We intend to do some newspaper articles, we have great relationships with our local newspapers, and they have been open in the past to us writing some articles, so that we can submit those on behalf of the school district, just explaining the facts of the bond. I also anticipate that there will be high coverage of this. It's a significant bond for our district, we've already had a lot of interest expressed from our local reporters, and so I would anticipate that in March, we'll see quite a few articles.
I've noticed also over the years, that since Greg Kowalski left the Eccentric, there's been really less coverage of Bloomfield Hills schools, so that would be something definitely to reach out to the Eccentric in particular. I know C and G has got us, but Eccentric has been kind of void.
Yeah, unfortunately, too, with all of our publications, as they're spread out further, and they have to cover more desks, there's less intimate knowledge on education, and bonds are very complex things. So they have to learn a lot in a short period of time in order to cover this issue. So we're trying to be helpful and trying to provide resources to them, so they can get caught up.
Downtown magazine also is, I think they'll be very willing to put things in their force.
Absolutely, Lisa and I have already spoken several times.
Perfect.
So email newsletters, we will keep that going, you'll start to see more than drips and drabs coming up pretty soon here. We will also make sure that we have some school-specific information that we're putting in on behalf of principals, so we're able to insert things, for example, into Mary Hillberry's newsletter, so that she doesn't have to do that, and the Lone Pine community can receive Lone Pine-specific information. So that will be ongoing. The website and web FAQ will be updated each week, right now it's being updated even more frequently, but we will continue to update that all the way through the campaign. We'll have information in schools, we'll have posters, digital signs, all kinds of information for parents to consume. We know that we have a lot of school events coming up, we know parent-teacher conferences occur during this time, and parents will want that information, so we'll be ready to provide it to all families. Q and As at staff meetings, Pat is poised to attend a whole bunch of staff meetings and stand up and give the facts of the bond and help answer questions. We have mailers, as I said, that will go out, informational videos that are in the works right now, the crew was here this week, they were filming in our schools, and those will be done very soon. I'm pleased to tell you that it is an alumni video crew that is in the schools doing this, so that's a real point of pride for us, and has been fun for them to walk through the schools and see them. And lots of comments of, boy, nothing's changed since I graduated, so. Side note. And then letters to stakeholders, again, it's really important that they hear from us and they hear from us directly, we know that there are lots of postcards, lots of political postcards, lots of things that hit homes, we don't want to get lost in the shuffle, so letters are important as well.
Any questions? I do. All right, you talked about a social media campaign, can you tell us what, specifically which social media and what the campaign's going to be? I've heard, you know, that reference before, that we're going to, that might even be the main source of marketing or informational. How is that going to work? Is someone going to be able to field comments? Are we going to be able to get back to people? If we post things and there are questions, what will the turnaround time be for those to get answered, that kind of stuff?
Those are a lot of great questions. So I would say, for this campaign, social media is one element, it's not the element. Really, when you look at polling data, those that turn out to the polls are not using social media as a part of their daily lives. So we need to be in their mailboxes, we need to be at their homes, we need to be at the Senior Center, we need to be at the library, those are really critical touchpoints for us through this campaign. We also know that we have to be out with all of those things before absentees. Jan Roncelli let me know that the last vote was about 70% absentee ballots. So, we know that by March 21st, all of that information has to be out there and has to be in people's mailboxes. As far as social media, social media is not something that we anticipate engaging in to weigh necessarily as heavily as, say, the Q and A on the website. If there's something that we need to address, we'll go ahead and do that, but right now, we're asking folks to funnel all of their questions through the website. It's the best way for everybody in the community to get the answers to that, because if we answer it on Facebook, not everybody has Facebook, not everybody goes to our page.
Right, but if we're going to put it on Facebook in the first place, then I think that we have to make it very clear that we're not going to answer, because people expect an answer to the comments, and I think when you put it on Facebook, there is that expectation there. So, you know, I like that we're using it, but I think that if we have no intention to get back to people and have any kind of dialogue, maybe we don't want to use it, it's more misleading than helpful at that point.
We'll continue encouraging people to direct their questions to the website, so when we see a whole bunch of questions, we've been doing posts online that say, hey, just a reminder, here's where you can go, you can ask your question, then we answer it comprehensively. The other challenge with engaging in that rapid dialogue online is it doesn't give me the opportunity to run it through legal. So, if I quickly respond, or someone from my team, or from the Speakers Bureau, if we're all online hammering out a response, it becomes challenging to ensure that that's a legal response.
All right, well, I mean, and I appreciate that, but what percentage of the questions that you think you're going to get are going to involve having to run it by legal? What, 10%, 5%? I mean, most of the stuff I've seen is, what is this number? What is this enrollment number? I mean, they're asking for facts, not really things that have to be run through legal.
So we tend to run everything through legal, just to be on the safe side, we run everything through legal. One thing that we did do this year, through this campaign, that is a nice touch in terms of getting back to people rapidly, is on our website, when you go to the FAQ, each individual question and answer, you'll notice a little Twitter button and a little Facebook button. If you're logged into Twitter or you're logged into Facebook, all you have to do is go to the FAQ, go to that answer, click the little tweet button, and out it will go on your account. So through the district's account, we certainly, now that we have a more robust FAQ, if we do need to correct misinformation or answer a question, that is an avenue that we can take, because that FAQ has been vetted through legal. But in terms of going back and forth, we have to be careful about our capacity as well. So, so far, I will say, I've seen a lot of community members engaging in that dialogue and utilizing facts from our website. So I would encourage anybody out there, the information on our website is accurate, it is vetted through legal, please copy and paste. So if you see someone and they have a question and you know it's on our website, please feel free to take it and give it to that person.
But we really need a formalized protocol between the seven of us, plus Pat, plus you, so between the nine of us, if a question comes through on Twitter or Facebook, we need to have that written down somewhere in terms of what is our role? In terms of, do we answer it then? It sounds like the answer is no. Do we then feed it back to you? Or, we don't need to answer that now, but I think between you and Pat, if you can give us some rules that we can operate under, it really would help us all out.
I don't think that we, I don't think we as individuals are subject to rules.
One question I do want to ask, so if everything gets funneled through this chat, right? So wherever it is, if it gets cut and paste through the chat, what is the expectation in terms of, A, acknowledgement, and then B, getting back to the person through this chat?
So, right now, we're looking at a couple of days that it's taking us to get back to people. That's time that it's taking to research the answer, to, again, put it through legal, and then to post it to the website. I hope that eventually, that timeline will shorten, hopefully, as we create the materials, there's still so much information to create that doesn't yet exist, because the, some of the questions that are coming in are new. They're not questions that we've scripted an answer for.
Are we at a minimum acknowledging them, getting back to them, saying, got your question, got to run it by legal, may take two, this is what I do in my organization, it's going to approximately two to four days, 48 to 72 hours. Are we, is that the protocol?
Right, to acknowledge them, and especially if we think that their question's going to take even more time. Sometimes what we've done is we've circled back to them a couple days later and said, hey, we're sorry, you know, we wish that we could get you this answer today, it's taking us more time, this is a deeper question to research, we need a couple experts, you know, what have you. And everyone has been more than understanding about that.
So what I'm hearing is the protocol would be, if there's something out on social media, we would cut and paste it, or someone would put it into this chat, and then that's going to get an acknowledgement and a response.
I think what I'd like to do is, as Howard suggested, come back to you with the protocol, because I don't think that's a protocol I want to determine in this format, but we certainly could look at doing something like that, and I'll talk to Pat about that.
I'm just going to say, I'm concerned about this run-through legal message that we're sending. I think it sounds insincere, and I also think people have a right to get an answer to something that doesn't require it to be run through legal, and I think we know the difference, some things, not everything has to go through legal. And when we say that, it sounds like, you know, we're giving people the runaround. We don't even know what the question is yet, and we're going to run it through legal.
I think, I'm going to let Jim explain this one.
And also, this history in terms of other organizations.
So, as part of our bond council services, I encourage administration to, you know, run stuff. I think what you're going to find, and I agree with you, the factual stuff, you're going to know, really, I've looked at all the stuff that's been put together, the FAQ and stuff, but as far as this goes, I think there, you know, stuff you're going to know. And then, as we get into the campaign, I think everybody's going to get a sense of, this is a gray area, you know, call Jim.
Right, so let me ask you this, if I could. The stuff that we know, that administration knows, why does that have to be run through legally before they're allowed to answer it?
As long as it's factual, and everybody's comfortable it's factual, yeah, there shouldn't be, you don't need me to, I'm available to look at everything.
No, I mean, I just think that's excessive to me, and it doesn't sound genuine to people who get that answer. I asked you how many kids were enrolled in preschool, why is that something you have to run through legal? For example, when we can look it up like that, you know, it's that kind of thing, I think that, you know, makes people think that they're getting, they're being handed a line.
The other issue in terms of the protocol, I'm sorry, is, one, you know, who should be responding, whether it should be administration or us, because the minute you respond anyway, whether it's administration or the board, there's the potential of getting into a debate and back and forth, and what about this, and what about that, and then all of a sudden, you're into a whole email or Facebook chain of events, which then can last till after midnight. So we just have to get that protocol, so we understand the rules of the road.
Okay, well, you can get protocol and how you would like to conduct your Facebook page, but I think that's the First Amendment, right, for the rest of us.
Well, this would be for, this would be for anything related to the district, I assume.
On my personal Facebook page?
What, I'm saying, I'm talking about things from the districts, it's something the district puts out. What you do on your own personal page is obviously your responsibility.
Right, that's right.
So the common sense stuff.
But again, that's where we need the lawyer to help interpret the law.
No, he just said we don't need the lawyer. The lawyer said that.
The common sense stuff, we're already answering. So those things like, well, how many kids are in kindergarten in Conan right now? We can get that answer right away. When it comes down to, well, it's this amount of money and that amount of money, we could use this for that, when it comes down to those really specific details, we want to be careful. The reason we don't want to answer on Facebook and Twitter and do all those things, questions coming from everywhere, and we already had an issue where we missed a couple on Facebook, because we weren't checking there, because everything's coming through the portal. And as far as Facebook Live, one of the things we'll do is we'll say, if you have questions during the presentation, we'll bring this up as well. What you need to do is go to this website, and then when we're done, we can put at the bottom, thank you for watching the presentation on Facebook Live, hope you enjoyed it, if you have any questions, concerns, or comments, here's the website, get it back to you. And our goal definitely is to get back to everyone within 48 to 72 hours. And as far as making sure we're transparent, every question that comes in with the answer goes on that website afterwards. So it doesn't matter what it is, pro, con, in-between, you know, if I have five dogs, can I still walk them on this property if the school's not there? It all goes on there, so people can see.
I'm just going to say, and I understand that, and I certainly wouldn't want to suggest that if we have a legal question, it doesn't get run through legal. Obviously, it has to be. But I want to say that there is value, and the community sees value in having a dialogue right then and there. Not everyone can come to a meeting at 7:30 at, you know, Lone Pine. I don't know that we necessarily want to cut off that avenue of dialogue and information spreading, if it's available and being used by people. Maybe we do, and maybe we discuss it as a board.
That's a good point, so what we can do?
But I don't think we blankly cut it off.
I think you're conflating a few issues. Number one is, which issues, or which questions should be answered immediately and which needs to be run through legal? That's question number one. Question number two is, when that answer is given, who gives it? Is it, you know, the spokesman for the board, or the organization, which is usually the president and the superintendent, or his designee, Shira, or is it the entire board? And then the third point that you made is, because what those first two relate to is district information, coming out of district resources. The next piece is, on your personal website, or your personal Facebook, what you can do, and obviously, on First Amendment grounds, you as, we as board members can say whatever we want, and really is not up to the rest of us to monitor that at all. But really, you're so, you've got really three issues that need to be sorted out.
Yeah. This is Jackie. I also agree that we can't be constantly on either, I think we have to be very clear, like when you have a webinar or something like that, that we're going to have certain times when we're on, and then there are certain questions that we can't answer, but there's going to be other questions we can't, and then you have to get back with people. And so I think it would be unreasonable to expect that we're always on all the different accounts. So I think that it's just, we just need to be clear what we're going to do, when we're going to be doing it, and that we give clear expectations on how we're going to get back to every single question. But I do think it's unreasonable to expect that we're always going to be able to answer immediately, we just need to have a reasonable time and a reasonable strategy.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think the biggest thing that I've heard is if we are going to have this portal, it's not whether we're getting back to someone immediately, it's we're acknowledging. Because I think, I think feedback that I've gotten so far is questions have gone into the portal, and no one has acknowledged people for 72 hours, four days, five days, so when there's no acknowledgement, then they feel that, you know, that question's unimportant or no one's looking into it, when you probably are, they just need the acknowledgement.
Well, and that's another good point, I've also gotten feedback that the portal, which is definitely a step in the right direction, is still not a replacement for the dialogue that people want to see. So when it says chat, maybe we want to change that to, because it's really not a chat.
Yeah, and that was corrected. Yeah, that feedback was provided, and it was corrected.
I mean, because I think people were expecting there to be some kind of chat, and again, you know, if they want it, we give it to them personally, but whatever.
Maybe it's more like a tick, you know, like when we have IT tickets or something, and then they're tracked, and every single one is answered, and they're open until closed, you know, that kind of a thing. I think chat probably is not the right word.
I've been answering what I can, and everything else I've been putting into the portal, because that way, Rebecca pointed out to me, that way it's not going to get lost, it's not an email from one person to another, you know, we're getting dozens of emails. But, having said that, I haven't received the answers to the questions I've put in, so, waiting happily on that. Shira, I have another question for you, we've talked about this before, to make sure that any piece of paper that's mailed out to our community members has not just an email and a website, but also a telephone number, I think that is critical.
Yes, absolutely, and so that's a piece that is not a bullet point up here, but IT is working on an extension that can be used exclusively for this, so we can have the outgoing mailbox recorded with information. So if there's new information or something that we need to share, if there's an update, if there's an upcoming Facebook Live session, if there's a, something that they can engage with, our goal would be to change that outgoing voicemail, so that when you call the hotline, you can get that information as well, as well as leave a message.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I do. So, when you, when we talk about using an email campaign, I know that we've had some issues in the past with being able to stake I know that we've had some issues in the past with being able to stake connected because of, with recent grads and parents of recent grads. How far back are we now able to go? Can we tap to the foundation's resources so that we can? I, I, what I hate hearing, because, you know, they're hurt, really, is parents of recent graduates who were very involved and have zero information about what's going on with, with bonds and sinking funds. How are we gonna prevent that from happening?
I'd have to look and see how many families of recent grads we still have in our system. I don't have that number off the top of my head.
Why can't we just keep them in the system?
So, families could stay in the system. We have a lot that, that opt out, quite honestly.
But are we, do they have to opt in if they want to stay in the system?
I don't believe so. I believe that change was made, but I'll-
We just talked about that with David at FFLA this afternoon, two hours ago, so you need to have a conversation with David, or I can get a decree for it.
All right, well, I did not know that, but I, but I still think it's something that we have to think about, because I know that that was something we were looking at.
There are some cybersecurity issues that are very, very important to the district that we have to protect against.
And then I, another question. What are, what, what kind of PR, and where's the overlap with the, with the work that you're doing and your team in the Bonics?
So, there's no overlap in terms of redundant work. It's, it's all done together. So, they may draft something, and then it comes to us. We may draft something, and it goes to them. But they are helping to advise us. So, you know, if we have a question about how could we word this, or here's a question that came in, what would you think about this answer? In terms of, like, a really comprehensive, as Pat mentioned, some of them are very, very detailed, very specific. And we want to make sure that there's clarity in the answer, so that it's not this muddled, you know, five paragraphs back. So they've been helping us with that as well.
Are they doing any polling stuff? What, what exactly specifically are they doing?
So, that's a good question, and I think they would have to provide that information to you. You know, or Pat, maybe you'd want to share some of the pieces, but-
Yeah, so we're looking at like the One Sheet we're working on, they're assisting with that. We're coming up with another tab as far as the why, that kind of has some paragraphs about why this bond's so important. What is it really about? So, the person that doesn't want to click on every single tab, and look at every picture, and watch every video, and look at every fact, question, and answer, has that information. So, I know Shira worked on that, sent it to them. They sent feedback this afternoon. So it's really a team effort, and they've been very helpful along the way. So I can't pinpoint and say, this is their lane, this is our lane. It really is more of a team effort. And a lot of those pieces, as we get them, like the email you received today, looking at the one kind of graphic to take a look at, and then we send it on to you guys for feedback as well, so you know exactly what's going on with these big pieces as they're moving.
Yeah, but we don't know that, I, this is the first I heard that they were doing any of this. So, I, I understand that we get lots of, you know, feedback and, and communication on what's being done. I didn't know until Shira just told me what the Bonics were doing.
Then what I'll do tomorrow, I'll make sure I put some of that in the update.
All right, and what about the survey that Paul was talking about?
So the Bon, what the Bonics did is they reached out to fourteen people. I was one of them, and some administrators. I answered probably six pages of questions. So, you know, I guess the next step is, what have they been doing? What is that data being used for?
That's a good question, and I would have to direct that question to them to answer. That's not a part of our, our overlap, if you will.
Have you seen the answers to that survey, though?
I have not.
Yeah, we should get the summary.
Yeah, I have not.
That's fine, fair point.
No, I have not.
Shira, I'm looking at the Bon page on a mobile device now, and I'm, I'm just, I'm concerned that meeting dates is cut off when you first open that menu. It's, well, it's not, it's at the bottom, so maybe it's visible on some screens, but not mine. And when you click on meeting dates, the, the dates are all, and times are all listed, but you have to click again to get to the location. And I just, I think I'm concerned about the visibility of the town halls on a mobile device.
Okay, good feedback. Yep, we'll look at that. Any of that kind of feedback, anything that you see, you know, we try to test them on mobile devices, but there are so many darn mobile devices, and tablets, and different screen sizes. And because it's a responsive design, that means it's supposed to scale to whatever screen you're using. But again, someone showed me just yesterday that there was some text overlap on a picture that we didn't realize would happen. So, and their desktop screen was just a different size than my desktop screen, so.
What, what, because I know, I guess you send out, is it on Friday, you send out a blast to the, at minimum, to the parent community?
Wednesday web news.
So it was yesterday?
Yes.
So, I don't know what went out. Did, did this information in terms of the meeting dates, was that in there?
Yep, there was information in the Wednesday web news yesterday.
I, I just want to say, I saw the, the slide deck parts of it from the webs. First of all, I think the website's really well done.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing that, and please pass on to the Bonics for whatever role they had in it as well. It, it's really well done. It's user-friendly, maybe not on a mobile device, but user-friendly on a, on a laptop. You know, I know you're constantly upgrading the content and fixing word choices like chat, for example, and I appreciate that. But the graphics are really good, and it, you know, for me personally, I look for user-friendly because I need that, and it's, it is well done. Also, sat through the parts that were picked at West Hills, and I liked the adaptability of the slide deck to be able to be tailored to the school that it's going to. That was just a, I think, a really well thought-out way to use, you put so much work into it, and then to be able to pick out, depending on the location and what's going to be of interest to the people there, that was really well done, too.
Thank you.
And along that same line, being the finance guy, I worked through the bond tax calculator, and it is superb.
Yeah, I agree, too. Great, great job.
It, that, that website is really a team effort. Our, our internal staff in all departments have been working on that very intensively.
I've heard a lot of positive feedback from people who were pretty critical about it, so, you know, I, I know, you know, there, there are some things that we're gonna, and I appreciate that it's more than once a week that you're attending to fixing it for now, until it's sort of up and running, but really-
That was a hiccup that we didn't intend, that only one person can be in there editing at once, or you all get kicked out. And so our team has to, we have a text string of, get out of the website, so. So I appreciate that feedback. Thank you.
And I know we spoke, and we're constantly adding meetings. I know two meetings, me and Spat, me and Pat spoke about the other day, was to add a meeting at Fox Hills
Yes.
on the site, and I don't know if that's been added yet, and then a meeting at the International Academy, I think, so I don't know if that's been added.
Both of those are on our radar, and we're working through schedules.
All right, so just to let the people know that that is gonna be updated, even though it didn't go out yesterday in the web last.
Yep. One last question. I know people who have had feedback about the survey, I'm sorry, about the website itself. If they, is there a quicker way to get a response if they're having? I mean, I know at the, at first you were, it was like hourly, that you were responding to certain things like that. If something is worded, whatever it is, is there a, a place other than the portal that they can go for, like, any? Because it's really in our best interest to listen to feedback about the website itself. Is the best, you have a, something at Communications, do you want to just say that, that?
We do. People are more than welcome to email us at communications@bloomfield.org. Yep, that's our ticketing system. So just as Jackie mentioned, it goes into a ticketing triage, where it's an open ticket until we close it. That said, the portal is a real ideal place for all feedback to go, because we're checking that. I'm hopeful that that portal directs to our ticketing system soon, and that way, again, it creates a ticket. That's our ideal operations. We're hoping that the voicemail also creates a ticket, because in the district, we get all of our voicemails as emails, as attachments. And so the real, the best way to handle it is through that portal.
Any other questions?
If the phone line is gonna be set up with a message, and I, I get it, like, it's gonna be hard to man that forty hours a week, but I would ask that it be short, and not sound like a robocall, right, not sound like press one if. And please, please leave your name and number, and someone will get back to you within a defined amount of time, and that we stick to it.
Yep, yes, absolutely. And we are hoping to have a couple hours where, where we will monitor that phone and have it on multiple lines. And I know we talked about being able to schedule some things, so we're, we're hopeful to set that up. Really, right now, we're still in the, the phase where we're laying the groundwork for having all of the information that we can pull from to create all the pieces that need to be out there really quickly. Our, our residents need a mailing from us, like, yesterday, talking about the meeting dates. So that's something that we're working on as quickly as possible.
Any other questions? Okay, next, thank you, Shira.
Thank you.
Next, survey results presentation.
All right, so, I was very fortunate to be able to work with Shira going through the data, and then Margaret as well, looking at the parent guardian survey results, and just looking at, what are our strengths? What are we doing really well as a school district? What are our growth opportunities? Where, where are there areas that we can improve and get better? And then some of the wonderings, like, hmm, just kind of wonder why this is done this way, or how we ended up in this spot.
Pat, just, just for background, this was a survey that went out when?
How many months ago?
July of last year.
July of twenty nineteen.
And how many responses did we get?
The top of my head, several thousand, but I would have to look up these numbers.
Yes. So it's older, obviously, but I think some of the data, especially for me, is very relevant. Especially when we look for areas where we can grow, right? So as an organization, we're always looking to grow and get better every single day. So some of the strengths, what do people feel we're doing really well? So, some of the responses, teachers are responsive to parent guardian concerns. Sixty-three percent say all, and only one percent say none. Teachers are approachable. Sixty-nine percent say all, and one percent say none. As far as teachers, treat students with respect. Seventy-four percent say all, and zero percent say none. Students respect their principles. Eighty percent said that's always true, and then twelve percent said it's usually true. Schools provide opportunities for extracurricular experiences. Eighty percent say always are usually true. And then sixty-one percent would recommend Bloomfield Hills High School with the NPS score of fifty-one, which is up from forty-four point nine one. So obviously, if these are areas that we were doing well in, we need to continue to build. But just as important, if not more important, are the areas where we need to make improvement, where we can grow, where we can better serve all of our stakeholders in the community.
I can't remember if we let students focus out, or whether this was just parents.
It was only parents or guardians.
Okay, okay.
For the public, can you say what NPS stands for?
It's, it's a, so, NPS is a natural promoter score, and it's a calculation based off of who would recommend you to someone, who would not, and who maybe would.
So is that a, out of what scale, a hundred percent?
It is zero to one hundred. I will tell you, it is, there's no industry that would have a hundred, right? So, so you're gonna hover probably around sixty to seventy if you're doing really, really well.
Okay, so we've, we've got a little bit of growth to-
We do, but it's a, we put it on here as a point of pride only because of the jump. So to go from forty-four point nine one to fifty-one is a pretty significant jump, one year over another. So that was exciting to see, but obviously, there's a lot of room to grow.
No, sorry, no, that is me.
So, in terms of our growth opportunities, feeling welcomed is one of our growth opportunities. About twenty-one percent feel moderately, slightly, or not welcomed at all, and that's not what we want to see, obviously. Also, respected. About a quarter of people feel moderately, slightly, or not respected at all. And obviously, it's a growth opportunity for us, that even more people feel not respected than not welcomed. So those two things, while they go hand in hand, we know that we need to work in both areas.
Yeah, and I think we're gonna talk a little bit more about some of the things that we're thinking about doing, or what we've already done. But part of, so we're working closely with National Equity Project, and part of what we're doing, like, our big equity goal is math. And so some of this data really supported that that was our need. So we're looking at K-12 math. We're starting, we're starting at the high school. So that's what we're digging into right now with the support of National Equity Project. Leading it, they're calling it our Equity Challenge. So that, I think, the data just really backed that that was an important area that we need to work on.
Just be, sorry, I don't want to interrupt, but before we go further, when you say we're working on math, you, you mean from an equity standpoint, not curriculum-wise?
Curriculum from an equity standpoint, yes.
Okay, so, because for some parents, it seems like the math curriculum changes every time you turn around. What, I mean, is that kind of what we're doing again?
So, we're, right now, and I, it might be on a later slide, but it's okay if we talk about it now. Right now, we're really starting to dig into, we, because of some of our data points, we've determined that this is an area that we have, that we need significant growth in. Particularly in math, the, the most staggering numbers are at the high school. So we feel like that's, it's just something that we need to work on, right? So, National Equity Project is helping us with that.
But when you say staggering numbers, do you mean in terms of an inequitable math scores, or just math scores?
So in terms of outcomes, we have racialized outcomes in math, yes.
Yeah, I've seen, I've seen that data for M-Step. Does it exist in other measures?
SAT is, okay. Yeah, the largest disparity. And, but it's across, it's, and it's starting really from the second we have tests, right? But we see it, we see it specifically in math. And so, National Equity Project, we, we took a lot of data to our last meeting, and that was where our whole team landed on, the design team that we have landed on. And we're right now sitting in a, let's figure out what's going on phase. So essentially, looking at student experiences and trying to find out what is the student experience in math in Bloomfield Hills, so that we can figure out how to move forward.
Isn't, because I actually had a discussion about this. Isn't that some of our students at the high school supplement, you know, whatever they're not learning in the classroom by tutors? And there are some that have tutors, and some that can't afford tutors. Isn't, isn't that a, a big part of the issue?
It could be. I, I think that it's definitely something that we need to consider, but we need to talk more to, because I think there's a lot of assumptions, right? So people make the assumption that it's because of tutors, it's because of this, it's because of that. What we want is, we want to know for sure what it is.
Well, I don't, I don't think it's an assumption, because I've talked to many families, hundreds of families, that use tutors. So I, I don't think that's an assumption, I think that's a fact.
I'm not saying it's an assumption that people use tutors. What I'm saying is, it, it is not the only factor. That's what I'm saying.
I think there could be a lot more. I think that's what she's saying.
Yeah, it, it, there's, it's not the only factor. I think that our curriculum is a part of it, our instruction is a part of it.
The context that we're using to teach math, the methodology, some of the delivery, it, it just, it's also tutors, but it could be other deeper things, deep things that we have to also work on. I agree.
If, just as a side point before we go further, I, I already really like the approach that we're taking to the survey better than the, the last one that we did, because here you are telling us how you're fixing something that the survey revealed. So, I, I mean, to me, that's already leaps and bounds ahead of what we were doing in survey data, data just a year ago. So, you know, I know you weren't prepared to talk about the actual changes
Right.
of curriculum, but just the approach that we're using this, not just to gather information, but to make changes.
It's just people for growth, right? We want to grow. That's why we're all here.
Let me just ask kind of a process question. In the survey, was it done anonymously, or do we have the names of the people?
It is not anonymous.
So we know who gave us these results?
Correct.
Do we, did we ask demographic questions so that we can disaggregate the data? Because everything you've shown us, and I, I looked through the rest of the presentation, is all on average, which is fine. But by disaggregating it, you might be able to see by demographic group, you know, that the numbers, you know, not all kids are above average.
So for the first time, this survey is tied to MyStar. And so for the first time, we have data on how many children are in your household, demographic data, all kinds of, how long have you been in Bloomfield Hills schools?
So it would be lovely in the future if we can get the cross tabs on some of this stuff as you focus in on certain groups to see whether, you know, it is kind of homogeneous or differentiated.
Yeah, and we're doing that with some of the administrative teams with some of this data, but also just additional data as we start digging into what we're doing with our Equity Project work.
Right, because your math data is coming from the actual scores themselves.
This is just confirming. Right, we have that data, and this is confirming based on the perceptions of the parents. We need student data, so that's, that's kind of, you know, and we talk about that in our next up, too, we need to be hearing from students.
Well, it's the same, correlated with that from MyStar, we can correlate it with, with Illuminy, and information in there.
Sure, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, but I want to also say, this is really, this is well done right now. I, I like the way that you're sharing this.
It's all Shira.
Okay, so yeah, oh, we had talked about, there was, so, just some of the numbers that we saw, and when, we had talked about this in Cabinet, and I think when I looked at it, I was kind of like, oh, what are the, what are the numbers that kind of hit your heart a little bit? Like, ooh, I don't, that doesn't feel good. So, there, there was a question about high expectations for all students, like, that number could be higher. The portrait of a learner, our families, it was very clear from that that our families are not aware of what the portrait of a learner is, and so we need to do a better job of that. And then just the idea of bullying, the numbers in terms of- And then just the idea of bullying, the numbers in terms of parent perception on whether we're following through, whether we're doing a good job investigating, those were pretty low. And so we need to do a better job of communicating how we're handling those. And also, we talked a lot about like, what, do people know what bullying is? Do we have a common understanding of the word bullying across the district in terms of families, but also how our administrators use it? So we just need to do, we need to figure that out and do a better job of that communication.
And I think that would go along also to the board in terms of communicating information, because I know we collected a lot of information over the last number of years on incidents that are happening in the buildings. But to feed that back through the, through the board in some way, shape, or form would be wonderful.
Oh, this is just, again, just kind of reiterating that when it, because it said for meeting needs, math was consistently the lowest. So the perception of our families is matching kind of what we're seeing in our data.
So some of the wonderings, you know, why so many families say students don't enjoy going to school? And one of the things we need to figure out is how we're going to best go about doing that. One of the things that I want to look at, there's an administrator in Eden Prairie named Rob Virgin. And what he did is he got together two hundred students and those two hundred students made the survey for the other students in the school. So it was written from their point of view with the questions that really concerned them. So I plan to reach out to Rob to see how we did that, to see if that would be a good fit for us. So often, even at our meeting last night, we had a young lady that was there. She, Charlie talked to her this morning and she wrote me a nice email last night saying, I didn't expect to be included, I showed up, I realize now I do have a voice in the school district and people really do care about me. So that's one of the wonderings. Another wondering is what does respect mean for families? Respect means different people, different things to different people. So we need to get some more feedback on that. So do you feel disrespected because someone didn't call you back like we should have right away? That we didn't answer an email fast enough? Or you didn't get the teacher you wanted? Or you had to wait too long to drop your kid off at the carpool? So what does it mean? Where's that coming from? Are we being reactionary with our technology if it's reported as easy to access? So the majority of people feel that our technology is easy to access, yet we're still getting a few people who feel like, I can't use it, I can't get on, the portal's not useful for me. But that's small in number, so we need to figure out where's the disconnect. What does bullying mean for families? And is that bullying being reported? I know coming from my prior position, so often I'd meet with the family and say, well, my kid's been bullied for four months. Did you tell anyone? Well, that's why I'm here now. Well, I wish you had come in earlier. That's horrible. Nobody should have to deal with bullying for four months, you know, before you come in. So is that kind of part of the survey where people feel they're being bullied, but they haven't said anything, so we couldn't do anything about it? And then one of my wonderings kind of so far in my first month and a half is, are we staffed optimally and are we scheduled appropriately? Are we really doing what we need to best serve all of our students based on the needs they have? So those are some of the wonderings. And part of that will be shared when I give my ninety day update, which I'm looking forward to as well, with everyone on the board.
Pat, when you say scheduled appropriately, are you talking about staff or students or both?
Both. You know, so talking to David, who is doing a great job with a master schedule, which I have to tell you with AP and IB and all the singletons is next to impossible, what he's actually asked to do. And if you haven't built a master's schedule, I don't think a lot of people can understand the amount of time and what he's being tasked to do. And it's almost, it's a lot, I'll leave it at that, right? So from the student point of view, we need to look at student choice of voice, is that one hundred percent driving the schedule? And then we need to look at, where are we placing staff? Are we taking our best teachers and putting them all in AP and IB? Or are we taking some of our best staff and putting them at the freshman level to make sure those incoming freshmen have a better transition to the high school and they're being as successful as possible and that we're packing the right skills and knowledge they need? Those are critical conversations we need to have, right? As a cabinet, as a board, to make sure we're doing what we all signed up to do, to do what's best for kids, right? So that's what I mean by those things. Howard?
I'll defer to Shira, obviously, as the marketing and communications expert. But from my limited experience, you know, surveys are great to figure out the whats, but you really, to figure out the whys, you really need to do one-on, either one-on-one communication or focus groups to really start getting the dialogue going, to peel that onion down and hear the different opinions so that you get the feedback.
Just a minute. It's coming.
Perfect, thank you.
How many more slides we have?
Okay. We're trying, we're trying.
So, yeah, so since this was taken in the summer, there's a couple of things that were already put in place. The envisioned math curriculum, we know that that is new. Ninth grade algebra had a new resource adoption. But the, the big thing that, that we're engaging in, learning services with the building administrators and teams within the buildings is this root cause analysis for math. So we're gonna be doing focus groups, one-on-one empathy interviews with students and families as well. We are going to be doing classroom observations, multiple classroom observations, just to really get to what's going on. And we're being guided through coaches from National Equity Project, which we're really excited about. So we feel poised for good work to happen.
I am thrilled to hear about the marriage of equity and academics. Thank you. We're also excited that we'll be bringing some professional learning opportunities for our front office staff. We're excited to work with them as we look at our, our efforts to be caring and resourceful and safe with our families. And so we'll be leading some, some professional development with them as well. Our team will be doing more Portrait of a Learner news stories, but Margaret and I are really geeked about the podcast that we're going to be doing. We're, we're getting ready to this fall, launch a podcast series that will be a carpool podcast, so you can listen to it in the time that it takes to pick up your child or drop them off from any of the activities that they participate in, or ten minutes for a community member to see what we're doing in our schools. So really bite-sized chunks that talk about teaching and learning in Bloomfield Hills schools. And then, do you want to talk about them?
I just wanted to say on that note, so I got the email from Carrie Crocker that they're doing restorative practices with families coming up soon.
Yes.
If you're talking about doing professional development, just a thought for your consideration as you move forward, years ago, when we would bring in people to do some professional development, when there was room for other people to be in spaces, for other people to be in the room, to allow board members or PTO leadership, PTOC members, to be able to see what our staff is learning about helps them buy into and support what we're doing. And it was certainly something that attracted me to run for the board. So I would put that as an idea for you going forward.
Yeah, we have, we still have, obviously, parents in our, like Global Champions and dismantling racism. We did have maybe five or six parents this year go through the full two days for restorative practices as well. And then the PTOs have asked me to come, but yeah.
I'm not just talking about practices, I'm talking about any kind of professional development. When there's opportunity to share them with families so they can be supportive and buy into what it is we want to happen for our students, it really strengthens our partnership.
That's great advice, really, great advice. I had an opportunity to do that a couple of times and it was really meaningful for me too.
And at the risk of volunteering somebody, when I, when I moved here five and a half years ago and walked into West Hills, I was blown away by, I don't want to say customer service, but the attitude of the people working in the front office. I like couldn't, and I volunteered in the clinic behind them. And I just, I would, I would read a book and I would listen and I couldn't believe my ears about how, I had never seen this in a school, how wonderful, how empathetic, how patient, how sweet. And when I complimented them, Debbie just said to me, well, we love children. So I'm gonna volun, what's the word? Voluntasques, volunteer the West Hills folks to help this work.
Actually, I actually saw great things about the math and the textualization of it too. So I think they're doing some good things in the math area too, in West Hills.
And then kind of moving forward, what are the next steps? So I've had a chance to speak with Shira. The next steps and expectation is for her and her team to have follow-up surveys and then launch the poll surveys for continuous feedback. Then what we need to do with that is bring that to you on a continual basis and say, here's the latest information we have, it's not nine, ten months old. Here's where the community feels we're strong, here are our growth opportunities. Here's where we need to improve, here's where we need to get better. Here's what we're going to do to get better and then bring you the results. We did these things, now where are we at now? So that we're always working to improve and listening to our stakeholders to get better and making sure you're informed so you know what's going on and what we're doing and what the results of our actions are.
And along with what Jennifer was saying, I think as we continue to work with you over the next four to six months and, and finish up the strategic plan and start working on goals for two thousand, twenty, twenty-one, having our goals link up with these, this kind of feedback information and make a continuous loop, linking it also with the district improvement plan and this, and the school improvement plan and really have coherence between all of these different systems, a word I just made up.
Yeah, good book, I enjoyed it.
But really linking all these pieces and eventually linking it to the, the scorecard or the dashboard. So all of these things were all there in pieces, but they really didn't connect well. And I think this is, we're, we're moving in this direction of really taking all of these resources that we've got and really having that coherence and that connectivity, which is wonderful.
It will drive our work moving forward and it's going to be really, really incredibly important for us to do. And that's why, it's not just those of us as a eight, it's those of us as a whole community. Every single person that's here.
To the goals and then the dashboard that goes out to the public.
Right, because we want the community to know, this is what we're working on. This is what we feel passionate your children need right now. And here are the measurable results that we're working towards. So yeah, absolutely. And I appreciate the support all of you have given me as a new person, it's been phenomenal.
Any other questions?
I have a couple, just, Jennifer, Jackie and I were on the survey committee, so I know, you know, maybe we're more hypersensitive to a couple of, some of the, still fixated a little bit on some of the questions in the survey. And the sort of lack of flexibility with an answer makes some of the data unreliable to me personally. I wonder whether we can't figure out a way to be able to ask questions to get just more reliable numbers. So instead of, you know, being locked into five different choices, none of which really apply to what you're, or maybe even the, you know, the percentages, maybe it isn't five, always, sometimes never. Maybe they can put a true percentage on it. I don't know what the answer is, but it feels a little, I, I still felt when I took it like it better addressed some of what I would say, but not a hundred percent. So I'm questioning whether maybe it's the, the survey place, if it's really not designed for school surveys. I don't know what it is, but it feels like a little bit of a disconnect.
You definitely can look at the Likert scale. I've done some work for EY Parthenon, where you go on and they have the scale, you click on it, you drag it from zero to a hundred. I don't know if that's something that's doable with this program, that's something we can look at. We can also look at having more open-ended questions so people can provide their narrative, because you, everyone had access to their narrative. And that, that's powerful, right? Because that's someone willing to take their time and share their experience.
Did anybody analyze or go through the comments that were received? Because two questions were open-ended and they generated a lot of comments. I read through quite a few of them.
We read through them as well. And so that's part of what you're seeing either in the wonderings or in the areas where we need to grow. And we'll continue to do that and have, my goal is to have more open-ended questions. Because if you're taking the time to actually do that part, you're really passionate. You have something to share, you want to be heard and you want something done about it or you wouldn't take the time to do it. That's my opinion.
Were we emailing the comments?
Yes.
I'm certain that they're in there before.
Last week. They were sent, Shira sent them last week, so you got all the data.
They were embedded next to the, like you had read in the margin of it a little bit to find out.
Well, she included a couple of sentences about, if you're looking for the narrative, here's where you go.
Unfortunately, as we all know with surveys, if you put comments, there's an expectation that you're gonna do something with it. And if you, we as the organization don't then respond back and especially if it's not anonymous and we know who it is, you know, people will get very frustrated if they put something in there and it sort of just goes into the website and never seem to be seen again, you're ignoring me. So that's, that's critical.
I'm assuming the wonderings, those two slides summarize ninety percent.
But there's, so there's the macro of pulling it together, but there's also the micro of getting back to that individual person.
Well, we, we did add an I don't know or I don't have enough information, right, to answer the question. I, what were the numbers on those types of responses?
Extraordinary when it came to Portrait of a Learner.
Okay.
Yep, yep.
Okay, I'm sorry, I did not.
It's okay.
I'm gonna look at.
That's okay, take your time with it.
Okay.
Some of the questions were a lot more than others, like some was like one percent and then others.
Yeah.
And it made sense because some of the questions would have been, like, kids would have been better suited to answer them, right? So parents are asking, like especially high school parents, right, you're asking, answering.
Yeah, Margaret, that's exactly what I'm trying to.
So it's kind of weird. Yeah, some of those questions, I was like, oh, a kid's not gonna go home and tell their parent about this. So the parent's like, I don't know.
But we have to remember, that's part of the, the original intent of this survey was to survey families, survey students and survey teachers and also be able to see the disconnect. So where do the parents say, oh yeah, no, my kid loves going to school and the kid says, no, I don't, right? Or where do the teachers say, oh yeah, all the kids in my care love coming into my class? And then, you know, thirty percent don't. So how do we, how do we see those disconnects? And then what do we do with that? Because that'll lead to additional wonderings that we have. So being able to issue the, all three modules, if you will, and then the community one as well, what do they know about us? What do they think about us? What do they need to know more about? So once we're able to do all four, we'll be able to see those disconnects.
Because another thing with cross tabs, not only looking by demographic group, but possibly looking by building. And maybe some buildings are knocking out of the park and the other ones, yeah, a little where to work.
Any other questions before we move on? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Late start time update?
Where's Ken? He said he was gonna come for this.
The traffic study based on the north and south middle school and the high school and changing those start times, all the data's been collected and we should have the results in two weeks. And I know Paul, this was your task force that you put together.
Yeah, so the task force, so just to give, you know, so the task force met, you know, over, you know, there was probably like four or five meetings of a group of twenty to thirty people that went through. And the last where, the last end was going through four different scenarios. This is obviously before, you know, we discuss, you know, the bond and what's gonna happen in the future. And I believe Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, scenario four was sort of the majority of the task force to look at. And that was kind of flipping the start times of having middle school start. Do you remember what that?
I think it was middle school, high school, elementary.
Yeah, seven forty-five, eight thirty and a little after nine.
Okay, so right now, you're looking at traffic studies to do that?
Yes.
Okay.
This would be something we can implement for next year. There really is a lot more data that's needed. Looking at the school configurations, we were talking about middle school, you might be talking about fourth and fifth graders as well. And then as far as the impact that's going to have and some of the concerns about having my child at a bus stop when it's not light out. So I don't see any way we can move forward. We all know the data says it's better for the high school students to start later, so there's no disagreement nationally what's there. But whatever we're going to do, we need to do it right. We need to get more information and we need to come up with a comprehensive plan that the community feels is what's going to be best for the children moving forward. And I don't feel we're at that spot, that's my opinion right now, to make that change for the start of next school year when there's so many moving pieces, I'm brand new, there's just a lot going on. And to do it wrong could be really detrimental to our children.
I don't think there has been communication of what the task force's findings has been. I mean, in terms of four, four alternatives, I didn't know anything about that or heard anything about what they are. So we need to have a little bit more communication of what that is, number one. But now that we have the bond, something to ask is, does the bond and the reconfiguration of the buildings, K-eight, help us in terms of implementing the different start times or does it hinder it? We don't have to answer that now, but just to.
I haven't seen the four plans in detail myself.
Exactly, so, but as we, because what Paul worked on for six months in January or February through the summer, you know, was all before the bond. Now this is a whole new piece of the equation. And is that an enabler to early start times or an issue? And it might be, once we get all the buildings reconfigured, then we can look at it for two thousand twenty-seven. I don't know. I mean, it's just something to think through, this whole thing, we got so many moving parts.
They're, they're telling us that one's not predicated on the other. And frankly, if, no, it's not. Because when we know better, we do better. And we know better with this. We know it's more beneficial for high school kids to start later. That's absolutely no data that contradicts that, none.
I'm not disagreeing with that, but it's all the.
So then why would we wait for seven years to do it?
It's the downstream effects of what's happening in the other buildings. That's all.
So, so, so that, actually, the point of this on the agenda was just to get an update from Brian, kind of where we are. So do the traffic study wasn't to have a debate about start times here with the board. So subsequent meeting, we'll discuss that when you get more data.
So the, the traffic study is a pass for option number four or, or a fail?
He's looking into it.
Okay, gotcha.
All the data's been collected, the report hasn't been finalized.
And to Pat's point about grades four and five, the passage of the bond would only help that because we'd have four and five back in elementary.
It's out of the equation.
Right, right.
Okay. We, we need a whole position paper so we have what we're talking about here.
Okay. And that wasn't a point of, that wasn't a point of this.
But at the same time, I mean, I don't see them as necessarily the same issue. I, I think there are different challenges depending on whether the bond passes or not.
You are correct.
But...
We need to bring the best information we have with what's going on currently with the current configurations we have. What are all the options? What does the community feel? Bring it to you and say, "Here are the options, here's the pros and cons, let's have a discussion. How do we move forward? How do we support our kids?"
I think, I think we need to talk to the parents also and get their opinion.
Yeah, I think, I think the point, point of this is that, I, you know, similar to scope and design, but at a lesser scale, there were, you know, 25, 30 people that spent time looking at this, going back this, and we just want to get an update in terms of next steps. And we know you're looking at the traffic study and then we'll determine next steps.
I'm going to tell you that I don't see it the same way as the bond because, uh...
I don't think we're discussing that right now.
No, but, but you brought them in prematurely and put them on an agenda.
I didn't, that wasn't my call.
I asked for it to be on.
Okay, so then I think it's, it's, I, I think we should make clear that, um, that it's not, "We're waiting for a bond." Because then people think, "We're waiting till seven years when we already have the data and it's medical data." So it, it, there is absolutely nothing that contradicts it. I, I don't know, um, I, I'd for sure want to get feedback, but what if the feedback says that they don't want it? We know it's best for kids. Are we not going to do this because data says not to?
Again, this was not the, you know, I think it was just to get an update from where the start time. You're right, this was not something I wanted to put on the agenda or have that discussion now.
I just didn't want it to drop off the radar completely. Like, I, I went to all the meetings, we had parents, we had teachers who came, we had a, a sleep physician come, you know, there, there were, there was a lot of really good input. And Howard, to your question, the, the, these meetings were more like, "Let's educate ourselves," do, like, really high level. Is this a good thing? Is this a bad thing? It didn't, we weren't really working on specifics. Um, but what we saw through that process is just about everyone in the room, some of whom were seriously against, like, they were, they, everybody wanted it. Yeah.
The issue, you know, we, we all know the data, we all know we want to do it, it's logistics issues, number one. So it's not the, it's not the, the, um, academic studies where I think there's no disagreement with that. But also, we've, you know, as I was just saying a second ago, all I know is that Paul had this committee. Other than that, I know absolutely not, I don't think the rest of us know or many of